Good evening. Welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education Work Session. Today is Monday, March 5, 2018. I'd like to call this meeting to order. First item on our agenda is a call for a moment of silence to be observed in memory of Loretta Hibbs, a Cabarrus County Schools bus driver who passed away on February 10, 2018. Thank you. Board members, it's time to set the agenda. I'd like to make one adjustment based on timing to allow our attorney to get here. We would like to move Item 4.01, the request for the driveway connection, to after Item 5.01, the budget update. Do I have a motion to move that item?
I'll make a motion to move Item 4.01 to after 5.01.
Second.
And Rob, second, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We approve the agenda now as amended.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schumaker and Dr. Kirk. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, we're ready to proceed, and that means Ms. Klutz, you are up first.
This evening will be the first time that we have discussed budget for the 1819 fiscal year with the board. The staff and Budget Committee, the staff started budget discussions back in November and have been working since then, and our Budget Committee has been working for the last two months. We'll have our final Budget Committee meeting on Thursday where we can finalize our recommendation to the superintendent, and the superintendent then can make a recommendation to the board. So we'll just get started with our budget development. This is, on your screen is a reminder of the meetings and what we'll be discussing each time. Today, we're going to talk about budget process that we've used. We're going to talk about capital improvement projects, or we often refer to them as CIP project, or CIP. We're going to talk about capital outlay with our Facilities Department, and talk about operational expansion with our Facilities Department, and then capital outlay, non-FMD, so non-facilities today. Our next meeting is a separately called meeting scheduled for Tuesday, March 20, where we'll do basically everything else, operational expansion for technology, just general education. We'll also need to do continuation at that time, and then we'd also like to give the board an opportunity to review our current objectives and see if we have any changes or anything we want to, modifications to those for the following year. Then on Monday, April 9, we're going to have a public hearing so that if we, if anyone from the public would like to speak regarding the budget recommendation, they may do so at that time. Any follow-up questions that the board may have from the previous two meetings, we'll try to discuss those at that time. And then finally, on Monday, April 16, we would ask this board to adopt a proposed budget, and what that does is just allows us to go to the county and make a budget request to them. This slide just talks about the Budget Committee and its role. One of the things that I would just highlight, I know that you can read, I won't read it to you, but highlight that the responsibility of the Budget Committee is to ensure that our goals are met and that feedback is taken and considered when we're preparing a budget recommendation. So always in the back of our mind, or the forefront of our mind actually, is our strategic plan, and there's a link there at the bottom where you can find that. On this slide, you'll see the Budget Committee members, the areas that were represented. You have board, you have our leadership team, community and parent representation, our county, and you can see that there's a significant list there that helps us out. Then you have your school representation, our principals, our Teacher of the Year, our Teacher Assistant of the Year, and then of course, the cabinet there. Just want to highlight that the Budget Committee's work is always displayed on our website, the Finance Department website, so you can review all of the Budget Committee materials, the minutes to the meeting, and all, any PowerPoint presentation or documentation that we have for each meeting, because we know that we're going to give you a lot of information in these next two meetings, and this is one of the areas that you can refer back to. Okay? It's just a pyramid that describes our budget development process. We start at the foundation with our school advisory teams at the school level, and we build our budget based on the school teams. Then the next area, we go up to the budget subcommittees, and those are areas like transportation, technology, those kind of areas where the budget subcommittees are coming to play. And then the next level is our Budget Committee that we just talked about. Then of course, we'll make a recommendation to the superintendent, and then the superintendent to the board. Okay? Now I'd like to ask Amy Louder to come over and talk with us about TRIGO and the process that we use during the Budget Committee.
Hi, good evening. So we've utilized the Kepner TRIGO analytical processes for several years, and I help facilitate with the budget process through that discussion. And we're just going to go over a little bit about that process, so for those who are new or who need a refresher, we'll provide that this evening. Decision analysis is the particular tool that we utilize. This is whenever we have a lot of different choices to choose from, we want to make the right decision based on a selection of criteria that the staff and obviously the Board of Education recommend using those for making the decisions. So the definition of decision analysis is a systematic process which helps us to make choices. We want to make sure that we're using data-based decision-making in this process. We try to take out all the subjectivity and really focus on as much data and objectivity as we can. The purpose is to really help us look at the benefits of making these certain decisions, and then also part of the process is looking at the risk. After we do this process, we do take a risk analysis look at each of the items. We talk about if we're not able to fund these items, what are the risks associated with it, and we make our final decision based off of that. This is really good whenever you have multiple options to choose from, you would like to choose a select number of those. We want to make sure that with this process, we don't automatically jump to what we think is best. We want to look at what are the decisions behind what's best, so looking at those objectives or those criteria. This process involves a couple of different steps. Select is the acronym that's used. We first state the decision. We establish and classify the criteria that I mentioned. We list what the choices are. We evaluate those, and we consider the risk, and then we trust our work and pick a winner. If I were to give you an example, if you wanted to purchase a new car by the end of February, this process would have you look at, well, what are the different options we've got available? But before we get to the options, what is it about buying a new car that's going to be important to us? The gas mileage, the size, the make and model, is it new or used? So those are the types of decisions that have to be made with objectives. Let me get to the next slide. We would then ask, so what do we need to decide in this particular decision of buying a car before the end of February? So we'd like to look at what's important for us to consider. What results do we want out of this? Are there certain restrictions? We label things as must and wants. Must are those things that have to meet certain criteria. Typically, those involve legal guidelines, decisions around policies, things like that, financial decisions. Wants are just really those things that really matter to us, but they may not have as much weight as those must do. Then we look at the alternatives. So of all the different budget items, for example, those were all of our choices. For the purchasing of a car, we might look at different makes and models, again, several different options for that example. Then we would evaluate. So this is the part that really has a lot of discussion. We ask the Budget Committee members to utilize a worksheet as they look through each of their justification statements, and trying to really figure out what's going to best meet the alternatives, excuse me, best meet the objectives from all the alternatives that are available. So we identify the must and the wants, and then we take each objective and compare them against those. At the end of that, you get a couple that rise up to the top, and you want to look at all the ones, not just the top ones, but we look at all the different ones we've looked at. How do they relate to our objectives? And then we want to make sure, not just to take the one that rates the highest, for example, but if we look at the risk associated with it, what risk are there? If we choose this, what could go wrong beyond just the point of the issues we've already talked about? We want to make sure we commit to a choice and provide that best balance of risk and benefit. And I think a lot of people sometimes say, well, at this stage, well, why do we go through the whole process? Well, I think we have to really shape an understanding of, part of the process is the risk analysis. We want to make sure that we're not just picking the one that is the one that a person likes the most, or seems the most reasonable. It really has to meet those criteria.
Thank you, Amy.
So the first area that we want to discuss today is our capital improvement projects, and this is different, it'll look different than it has in previous years, because we've been working closely with the county to, I believe, align our request in the way that they can fund best. And so this year, they've asked us for anything that's $500,000 or over, they would like for us to put it on this list called capital improvement projects. This would include our tenure plan. So the board approved the tenure plan in February, and we're going to capture these items, the items that are related to the 1819 year in this category. And then you're going to see some of the items that you saw last year in a different list, and so we're kind of merging the list. Okay? We'll get started. And so what you see here at the top of the list is the new West Cabarrus High School, and we're requesting FFNE technology and contingency. Now, most of that high school has already been funded, and we have the budget for it. But because we don't need these items until later into the project, that's why they're not funded yet. It's really just a cash flow and a timing issue for the county, so we have that on our request.
Could you explain FFNE?
Sure, absolutely. FFNE is furniture fixtures and equipment. The next item is very similar in that the new Performance Learning Center has been funded, everything except for the contingency, so that just kind of holds that spot there in case we need it, and we hope that we won't need it. Next, the Southwest Elementary School, construction owner, some things that would come at the end of construction, FFNE and technology for $3.688 million. Renovations to J. and Fries is a little bit different, so I told you it was anything greater than $500,000, and now I'm giving you a number that's $388,000. I do understand that it's less than $500,000. This is just a conversation that the county, we've been having with the county. It was on their CIP list from last year, and they've asked us just to include that. It's the best place for them to fund it. Then you'll get into things that you're used to seeing, so the 20 mobile units originally, when this board approved, or requested of the county, it was 45 mobile units. But since then, we've had a decision on class size, yea, and so we've done a reevaluation of that. We know that we'll need eight mobile units for growth, and we're anticipating about 12 for class size still yet. So remember, it's a roll-in, and it's going to happen over four years, so we're going to need the space eventually. We can just have, we need it over four years rather than in one year. Okay? The next item is three activity buses for the new high school, and so we know that the new high school doesn't open for another till August 19, but what, we would need this funding in July of 18 so that we can get those buses ordered, because there's about a year turnaround time on those. So we would want those to be on the property and ready to go when that school opened.
So why are those more than the yellow buses?
Why are the activity buses more than the yellow buses? Who wants to answer that? So they, they're designed differently.
They have storage underneath, they have storage compartments underneath.
They have storage compartments underneath? I'm just going to relay, since he's not on mic. And the engine is different too, right, Brian? The engine is different on those. So the 10 yellow buses for the new high school, and so a lot of this, it's really difficult to know exactly how many buses we're going to need, because you have growth also, but we also don't know exactly how we're going to move folks, right? So it's hard to really kind of put your finger on that until you're closer, but that's our best estimate right now. Security camera upgrades, system-wide, $601,000. That moved from the other list that we had, capital list, into this list because it's over $500,000. So something you've seen before.
Ms. Klutz?
Mm-hmm.
On the buses, will these come with security cameras, or is that something we have to ask for separately?
We, absolutely.
Is there a turnkey?
Yes.
$888,000 covers the cameras that go on the buses and?
It does. It does. We have committed to every bus that we purchase, we'll have a camera on it. The only ones that do not is the state replacement buses, and so if the state is replacing one that we put in service, then we still have to pay for that. So there's always going to be some expense associated with those, but these new ones that we buy locally will always be budgeted for the cameras. Just continuing down the list, this is something that you've seen last year on budget, the electrical at Mount Pleasant Elementary. Then all of these items were, I believe, on the last, on last year's list, HVAC at J. and Fries, roof replacement at Mount Pleasant Elementary. Then we'll skip down to, sorry, the new downtown elementary school. You see where it says planning, design, and land acquisition. Again, that's timing and cash flow. So for the purpose of this report, we're not putting that we need 35 million, we're just putting for the year of 1819, this is what we'll need for them to fund. Okay? Same with the new high school, after the new high school, right? And then the middle school, same there, and then we're back into roof replacements that were on our previous list. Okay? And so again, just a reminder, this list is combined with our tenure capital plan, so anything that was on the five-year plan, the tenure plan is incorporated here if we needed money in that first year. And again, anything over $500,000 that came from the original list is incorporated into this list. I'll give you a moment just to look at those. And a few more for you to review.
Are these items in an order, or are they just there by?
They are. Most, for the tenure project, five-year, tenure plan, five-year plan, there's a certain sequence that you have to do it. If you're going to do the five-year plan, you have to buy the land first, and then there's a sequence. And so filtered into these were those projects over $500,000. And so our Facilities Department, and Tim Louder, and Cabinet reviewed these and inserted them in where they could fall, most important.
On Slide 19, for the Fire Academy for $2 million, is that in the current facility across the street, or to build another facility on the campus itself?
That's actually a renovation of the facility that they're using right now.
Of the existing?
Yes.
Fire Academy, yeah. Now I found it. Okay. And I'll move to the final page there for this category. Questions on this category before we move on? All right, we'll move on, and this is our capital outlay FMD. So in this category, you'll find projects that are $25,000 or greater, up to $500,000 now. And this is the category that you would have found those other projects in that were $500,000 or greater last year. Okay? So this is a summary sheet, so Ed ties this back. Every year, we can go from last year's request to this year's request, and what happened to every single item on that request sheet, which is excellent for us to be able to track that. So what you're seeing, just kind of walk you through this spreadsheet, is up top right-hand corner, that's 2018-19 projects, and so we're saying that we have $18 million worth of requests for the 1819 year, go down each year, and then for five years, we have a request of $92 million, okay? We'll talk about each of those categories.
But this doesn't represent the total deferred maintenance?
Okay, let me finish the bottom here, and we'll talk about that. So in the middle is where we highlight the top 35 projects, and so out of this $18 million that we've identified that we need for 1819, there were 145 projects. And so rather than us spending days prioritizing 145 projects and knowing that the funding is not possible for that amount of projects, we focused on three projects in each category, and you see your categories there. Okay, so what that ends up doing is giving you 35 projects if you can't multiply. But, but we can multiply. There was just one project that got consolidated, so we'll talk about that. So we have 35 projects in the top, and that's $5.5 million is our request. So this, let's go down just a little bit and focus on the bottom of the sheet. Okay, we'll move that up just a little bit so that you can see. So what happens is last year, Mr. Schumaker, our budget request was $226 million right there where I'm highlighting, okay? And so this year is only $92 million. So what happened from that $226 million that made it go down to $92 million, right? That's your question, right? So if you look over here to the left, what has happened is anything greater than $500,000 was moved off of this list and put onto a CIP list, okay? That list that we just went over. That was $142 million that we took off, okay? We just put it on another list. And then here are some other little things that in and out, so we might had to adjust the price for inflation from last year. You're going to see those kinds of things. Maybe we found a different solution for a project, and we had to adjust the price. Those are these kind of things here that we can all reconcile. And if you have a project in particular that you want us to look at, we can go back and tell you exactly what happened from one year to the other. So that brings you down to our $92 million that we talked about before. Okay? Questions on that? I know there's a lot of information on that page.
But as I talked with you earlier today about it just a little bit, last year, we had the summary that showed the entire deferred maintenance, and you said you're going to be working on so that we can kind of see by year what the deferred maintenance is looking like for the next five to 10 years. The trend, so we can see all of it, even though I understand why we're breaking it into the units to help, for the county to help us out, get two types of fruit.
So yeah, this is the first year that we pulled the list out separately, so $242 million, $226 million, and then we've taken away the $142. But we'll have a spreadsheet in the background that we can continue to track that for you.
Any other questions, board members, before we move on?
Okay. So now, this is the list of the top 35, the ones that we just identified as the 5.5 million. Here's the list, and it's prioritized. I'll point out that those points values right there are the TRIGO points that we come up with during the process. And then you can see that number two was originally, the point value was 98. And so how did that get up into number two and not below? It's through that risk analysis that Amy talked about, okay? So this is how they prioritized for us. I'll give you a moment to look at that. And we are more than happy to answer any detailed questions about any of the projects that you see here. We have also loaded the justification documents for every one of these projects in board docs that you have, and then also you can review the minutes to the meeting where we discussed all of the projects in detail. I'm going to go to the next page.
I do have one question. On the boiler?
On the other page?
Yeah, back on the boiler installation at Central Cabarrus. What do we estimate the life of that boiler is, that life is of that boiler, and then what is the, how much lead time do we need to replace it if it should fail on us? Because it looks like a kind of a shutdown-type project, not something you'd do during active school time.
I know that Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Kirk actually can talk to you about boilers, he just replaced them.
Actually, for that boiler, the, it surpassed its life cycle, and it is in need of immediate attention. That is one of the reasons why it rose above, even though it's had a lower score on the TRIGO, is because of its immediate need and impact on the current operating budget, should it fail.
So that would lead me to believe that on the TRIGO, some things don't really capture the essence of, like life cycle kind of issues when we judge them. So you all made a determination after you ran your ranking that you looked at, you had a discussion about some of the soft issues that were going on with this, and also with the rerouting the four-inch water main underneath Central North Cabarrus.
I'd just like you to remember what Ms. Louder said about that. So there's, the process is not done until you've run the risk analysis. So an objective of the group was to look at ROI, look at operation, and that kind of thing. So that's one thing where we would hit this. But then, when we finalize it and we look to see, as related to each objective, this, how this project relates, is there a risk that we didn't talk about before that's going to have a bigger impact on that? And so that's exactly why that moved up. Other questions on that page? You can stay until we get done with this page. All right, it's just number 11 through 20 in order. Questions on that page? Starting 21 through 30, if you'll review those.
Kelly, what's the reasonable line? Have you figured out that we would reasonably expect, I know we don't have final answers yet, reasonably expect to get down to a certain number?
That's really, that's a hard question, Cindy. It's, that's why we did the three in each category, basically a lot to do with his manpower. So if you've given me 145 projects and the money for them, he can't get to them, right? And so he can't even manage 145 projects a year. So we limited it to the three in each category. You know, there has been discussion of different funding options that the county may have with sales tax and that type of thing, and so if that, you know, works and happens, then that number obviously changes than it has in the past. And so I think this, $5 million and three projects in each category is a really good picture of what our needs are that we can manage.
So I'm just going to take your cue from that for any- For anybody who was wondering what happens to sales tax, it directly affects the county's income, their revenue stream, and therefore affects what we can do at schools. So buy Cabarrus.
We have one more page. I'm sorry, I didn't ask for questions. Do you have any questions on that page? Okay. And the final page in this category? Questions?
Kelly, on number 28, pedestrian walkway from Highway 29 to the existing walkway at Central Cabarrus, why does that fall to the school system and therefore the county dollars when it's a state highway and within the city budget? How does that all work out to be an expense that we need to budget for?
Yes, sir. So the area that that would impact is actually our area. It's not state-maintained there as far as that property. And if we want to implement a safer walkway through there, which we just recently had an incident where someone tripped there, that would fall on us. State's not going to provide that, of course. No, sir. This is up to it.
All right. We'll move on to our next category. We'll keep Chuck because this is his category two. So this is the operational expansion for the facilities department. So we'll talk about facilities and then we'll talk about grounds. And so this is his day-to-day operations. So the first request here is to increase the maintenance operating fund, just the normal things that he does day-to-day, $1,025,000. And Chuck can give you some examples of that, but it's just really a testament to, we've just not had a lot of increased funding over the last 10 years or so, but we've grown significantly. And so as you look at those budgets, he can talk to the details about that.
Sure. And this is items such as door and window repair. You know, it's something that people wouldn't obviously think about very often, but we literally get requests up to $3,000 a week for repair and replacement of windows and doors. Last count on windows, we were at somewhere in the neighborhood of $20,000. You can imagine how many doors we have and on a day-to-day basis in 53 facilities, how often we have to maintain those. And in this day and time, nothing's more important than the security of our doors and windows.
So do you have a prescribed preventive maintenance program for your doors where you're visiting them at least once or twice a year? Every door? Or every exterior door and fire door?
We have one that we're implementing now. We're still working on, as I said, we're still getting the complete count on doors and windows. That's underway right now. And every year we're adding more and more to our preventive maintenance program.
Okay. The next item requested are three utility technicians, and these are just the folks in Chuck's department that will do all that work.
Actually, these three utility technicians we're requesting are for the HVAC department, specifically for the preventive maintenance program to be able to accomplish that work. There are more hours required to do the maintenance that the original equipment manufacturers state that we have to do in order to keep the equipment up than we physically have manpower to do. These people are desperately needed, just so that we can maintain on a day-to-day.
And the final item he's requesting is a painting crew with supplies. And so in previous years, there's been requests on that project list, $25,000 and greater, to paint schools at, you know, a cost of, how much?
An entire school. The most recent cost we have is $220,000 per school. So we based it on that, on a recent new school that was completed.
So looking for a different path, and rather than paying contractors to do that, we'd like to be able to hire a paint crew and just to have that internally and get more bang for our buck.
Yeah, I just wanted to share that was the one budget session I want Carolyn and I kind of split as the alternate person. And David and Robert, you were both there at that one. And there was a lot of, I'll say, lively discussion and passion to just improving the morale, the spirit of the school by having ready access to a paint crew and not having to go out and bid and have contractors come do it. So not only does it save money, but it is, I think, a fairly low-cost activity that we can do to help the schools.
On the, I just want to ask, on your utility technicians, you said that you don't have enough people to do the work. How many hours behind are you? Is it more than the three that you have there?
Yes, sir.
Could you just kind of send us a blurb on how much you think that you're in the rear so we could kind of get an understanding? Because I know what you're talking about. A preventive maintenance program takes more time.
Yes, sir.
Because you're really now not reacting to your equipment breaking down. You're trying to stay ahead of it.
Trying to stay ahead of it, move to that predictive maintenance phase.
Right. So that you can budget better for replacement.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Yeah, it would be nice to kind of know how, even if you fulfill this request, how much farther do we have to go to provide?
So I can tell you currently, we have actually calculated that. We're between 12 and 16 people short in that department as far as just preventive maintenance. That's just that department. So to keep the numbers realistic with the county and their need to support us, I don't think it's realistic to expect they're going to fund all of those people in one year. I think it's realistic to ask to phase this in. And three technicians is what we think would be reasonable at this point to move our program forward.
And obviously, we're adding new schools fairly quickly. Are, do you have a rubric that you're following, that you're following that we can talk with the county about, all right, when we bring on this new school and we bring on this next new school, we should have at least a tech or two or three that go with that school to accommodate the maintenance associated with it so we don't keep falling farther and farther behind? Have we started that kind of conversation with the county to begin to look at the operating side of how do we take care of our buildings and having the right kind of maintenance folks rather than just constantly falling behind?
Yes, we absolutely have been having that discussion the last couple of years. And the current formula that the county has requested, we've agreed to, is that if you add square footage to the facilities, then you would add additional funds for those square footage. And so we take what we currently are funded and allocate that and ask for the increase based on the percentage of square footage. That doesn't get us ahead, that just keeps us from dropping behind. And so kind of same thing with grounds is we do the same way. We've also implemented with instructional supply, technology and those type of things. And that just comes directly from our working relationship with the county and them understanding our needs and how we do get, we get behind if we don't. So again, it's not, it's not what we need, but it makes us, at least we're not going behind. We're not going backwards. And you'll see that in the continuation budget at our next meeting. See those items. Okay? So we'll move over to our grounds department. There's two items there. One, very similar to the maintenance, the general maintenance, but this is specifically for grounds. And we're asking for a $275,000 increase there. I know Chuck and his group's done a great job of improving the grounds over the last couple of years where they've been neglected, primarily just because of money. There wasn't enough money to do what we needed to do. So he's asked for the $275 there. Stormwater technician, you've seen that for the last three or four years. The county has been gracious. They have, you know, funded some stormwater technicians, but unfortunately, the need grows and continues. And so you're seeing another one there. Questions on these areas? Okay. All right. So we're going to switch categories on you. This is capital outlay, but this is non-facilities related. So we'll just start in. This is an area that's more defined, whereas we generally get $1,020,000 from the county annually for this category. You can see that our request is $1,009,000. So we will come really close to getting most of these items, assuming the funding stream stays the same. So this one's a little easier for us to kind of wrap our heads around. The first item is furniture fixtures and equipment for the schools and the departments. You've seen that one for several years. The county has funded that for several years, and it's a great improvement, well-needed. And we're just so big that we continue to need, we need at least this amount every year to be able to keep up. The next request is for mini-activity buses, $240,000. And again, you can read your justification documents, but these mini-buses allow for staff or for staff to drive these buses that do not require a CDL. So that's kind of the really important part of that. And there's a lot of student groups that are smaller that can fit in the mini-activity buses much better than driving a whole, a large activity bus. Then you have the four-activity buses strictly due to age of our current activity buses. And Dr. Probst and her staff have in the justification all the ages of the buses and the miles. And we've really put activity buses on the back burner for several years, and they really need some attention. The next one is replace, repair and expand school-owned instruments. And these are the instruments that stay at the school, used for classroom instruction. And we, the county, was able to fund this last year. It went, it was wonderfully received, and they did a great job with the money, sending the money, growing the money as far as they could.
And this is musical instruments, right?
This is musical instruments. Yes, it is. Yes. Yes. Next item is 42 MAC mini-servers. And if you have questions about that, Dr. Probst and Michael Stockst are here, can help you with that. The next item is, has an overstrike. It's updated paging system. And I'd just like to explain that. So for several years, Dr. Probst has had this on a budget request. It's obviously a lot of money, and it didn't get funded, didn't float to the top. But as Dr. Probst was looking at a phone system, replacing the phone system for this year, we were able to look at a lease to do that. And once we rolled this over to a new system, a new phone system, we were saving a significant amount on our operation, operating dollars. And so dollars that were budgeted for the telephone budget could then be used to lease a phone system. So once that, we were able to kind of get that under our belt. We knew that the paging system was a high need too. So we looked at that to determine if we could lease the paging system in the same manner and still keep that within our current operating budget. And we were able to do that. We're really proud of that. We think that's the right direction to go. So that's why we've overstricken it here.
And it's item 7.051, tonight's agenda.
So if you approve it tonight, we can leave that overstrike and take it off the budget request. And if for some reason that doesn't, then it would go back on. Your next item is a service truck for our transportation department. As we added staff years ago, you know, funds were tight. We weren't able to add a truck. And so they picked up a used truck that had a lot of miles on it. And so at the end of the day, we're short a service truck. And these are the trucks that, once you put them in service, the state will replace them. So it's really great to go ahead and put those in. The final request is your vehicles for your IT technicians. And we have staff in IT that we're currently paying a mileage reimbursement. So we all know that it's generally better to have your own vehicles in-house rather than pay the mileage because the IRS rate is generally 55 or so cent a mile, and that can add up. Okay. Questions on this area? All right. So that's all I have for you today. Again, a reminder, the next budget meeting that we'll have for the board is on Tuesday, March 20. And we'll review all the operational and continuation items then.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Clutz. Ms. Norris, I wanted to ask you what, how your experience has been on the Budget Committee?
It's been very positive. It really makes me realize how much they, our board and the Budget Committee and Education Center, and they value teachers' opinions and teacher-assistant opinions. So I appreciate the fact that I was asked to serve on the Budget Committee. It's been a great experience.
Very different from being at school.
Yes, very different.
So, and I was glad to see Mrs. York there as well.
Absolutely, yes.
The TA of the year. Okay. Board members, any final questions for Ms. Clutz on the budget? Okay. Before we go back to, back up and do the original 4.01, I just wanted to thank Deputy Chris Dow. I failed to mention him. Thank you, from Odell Elementary School. Thank you for being here tonight. So Mr. Louder, are you ready? The next item for discussion is the request for a driveway connection to the Weddington Hills inbound driveway. And Mr. Louder will go over that with us. And there was a new item added to board docs today. You said it was, which number does it have after it? Okay. It's just another option to what was previously provided.
Good evening, board members. I'm here tonight to present to you on behalf of the owners of some property, for Delovitz have just purchased a piece of property on the southeast corner of, what, the Weddington and Winkler driveway and Weddington Road. And their intent is to develop a dance studio there. And like all of our projects, we go into a final review with the City of Concord. And during that final review, the City of Concord informed them that because they are changing uses for this piece of property, they will be required to make a certain amount of improvements to Weddington Road over the fundage of their property, which was, I believe, beyond their expectations and beyond what they had budgeted for the project, obviously. It does cut you off hard sometimes. But in doing so, those improvements were probably $50,000, $60,000, which obviously had a major impact on their business model, as you would expect. The City of Concord at that time said, you know, basically that's just policy and you have to do it even though the rest of the road doesn't have it. We're facing very much the same thing on the high school. We're going to put Kermit Gutter the entire length of our high school property, even though there's no Kermit Gutter anywhere else on the, on the thing. But we're very fortunate as a school system that the City of Concord has to pay for that. So they're not quite as fortunate as we are for that. So anyway, with that being said, City of Concord suggested to them that should they take an interest off of our drive and not have to create a separate interest, additional interest off of Weddington Road, then those requirements would then be waived. And they would be allowed to be able to connect in without having to make the improvements on Weddington Road. It kind of pushed that requirement to the side. And so doing so, they've approached us and asked for your consideration of doing so. And I know the first one was a sketch that we talked to Mr. Lovett about. He kind of sent me a rough sketch at the beginning of the project, kind of showing what we were talking about here. I think we go to the next, I guess I can drive this thing for the next one. Is that right? Nope, I can't. Okay. The first, it's not a touchscreen, is it? Okay. I've got touchscreen on mine, anyway. But this one allows, you'll be able to zoom that down a little bit. Who's doing that? Michael? You driving that, Michael? Zoom that down a little for me a little bit, buddy, so you can see the whole thing. As you can see, this is a plan view of the property itself. The house, of course, is located in that corner. And the driveway then would connect off of the school drive into the parking lot, which is at the back of the property. And you see there's no connection then to Weddington Road. I think you have another one there, Michael, that shows kind of a, the next one. And one of the concerns we have there, this is a one-way street, you know, in and loops around and comes back out, you know, at the new intersection we'll have at the high school. One of the concerns was, should someone come in and utilize- One of the concerns was, should someone come in and utilize the parking lot, then come back out, and would turn the wrong way, be going the wrong way because it's a shortcut back to the road. And in doing so, he presented us another, which is oh six, Michael? And proposed this arrangement, which would be a one-way in, one-way out, then it would be curbed and directional in and out. So when he came out of the parking lot, then you would be directed to turn left, and would obviously have to go along with the traffic in the one-way, one-way street. So we've done that, and now I've talked to our attorneys and Mr. Shaw, let me get to that portion of it. Mr. Brian Shaw had looked at it with me, and gave me these comments and asked me to push this information along to you. First of all, there's no obligation, obviously, that you have to do this, but it is for your board consideration, it's all your decision. But should you decide to accept this request, and, you know, if you have any concerns about safety or have any pose safety concerns or unreasonable safety risks, it would expose the Board of Education liability. He suggested that, you know, we work with the Levits to have a sign of waiver of claims and indemnification and a hold harmless to the Board of Education for any claims from third parties should they be visiting their property and come off and have an accident. He also suggests that, you know, we would require the Levits to show evidence of insurance, a certain amount, whatever you deem necessary, with the board named as an additional insurer to make sure that that liability would be covered should there be any hold harmless, to be able to honor the home harmless portion of the project. And then, obviously, the Levits then would bear any costs associated with the connection. That's pretty much a given, they understand that, so that's pretty much the way it is. But in doing so, I was here to present that to you tonight, as staff representing the Levits. They came to me and asked me about it, and then the facilities, I'm bringing that to you for your consideration. Should you wish to consider that, then obviously it would be an agenda item on your next board of agenda, and for your consideration. Any questions as to how and why?
Where's the current driveway for that property?
Can you go back to the planned view there, number three, I believe it is? No, I'm sorry, go back to the, but the current driveway is out the, number two. Actually, that one shows it. You see the concrete driveway that comes out by the house right now, just north of the house? And then, of course, that sketch shows it coming and relined on the Winkler. You see the speckled, it's in the speckled area, right, there you go. Thank you, Mike. There's a little pointer, that's cool, I didn't have one. But that's the current driveway. That driveway would basically go away, and then the connection would be ran off Winkler. That's kind of cool, yeah, I kind of like pointers. Here we go. There's the current driveway here, and it currently connects here. It's just a standard residential driveway, because it was a residential residence, obviously, for the last twenty years. It was built almost exactly the same time, I think, the school was built back twenty years ago. But then they have to have since purchased and doing some additions here, obviously, to allow it to be used as a dance studio. By doing so, this driveway would go away, and they would just basically enter in here, in and out of the parking lot from this side.
So, Mr. Louder, is our main concern, consideration of a design that, in effect, keeps anybody from turning left out of that business driveway, or turning right out of that driveway, so that they continue the flow as the current loop already?
Of all the things that I mentioned from the attorneys, I would say that would be the most, you know, the liability associated with someone going in the wrong direction there, and where you actually have people coming in for school activities and may have a, you know, collision situation, and then want to, you know, have someone liable for doing so. By doing that, by having the roadway split and then forcing it left in and left out only, then that would pretty much alleviate that wrong turn and, you know, face-traffic situation. And that's why that was offered up as an option.
Do any of these plans include signage or painting of the driveway such that, Mr. Harrison, don't turn right when you come out of there?
They said they would be more happy to put any signage, we've said, that says one-way street, no right turn, that sort of thing, and directing people as they come out of the parking lot to make their left turn only, that sort of thing, would obviously be very well-signed, so that they would understand that they had to turn left and go forward.
But it's also reasonable that the traffic in and out of this business would not necessarily overlap much of what is going into and out of, into the school facilities at the same times, the two schedules would not overlap much?
In discussions with the Levits, I talked about that as a concern. And they said they have looked at all the release schedules and the beginning schedules of our thing, and they will adjust their hours to not have that impact directly on that thirty-minute timeframe on each hour. We've got two hours in the afternoon, and an hour and a half in the afternoon, and an hour and a half in the morning that has that impact from parents entering that direction for both schools. And they would change, offer their hours to not coincide with those two.
I, I'm just going to say that I think that would be a great challenge, and we're adding a third school there in January. So that's going to occupy a very broad range of time, in addition to athletic events and school events. So I don't know that we can force that. We need to think about that as an accepted risk.
And currently with traffic, normal morning or afternoon traffic into the three schools, two schools now, but three schools, does it ever back up out to Weddington between buses and parent cars trying to come in there? Does it ever back up completely out to Weddington?
It has so more in the past. This past year, we went in and added additional laneage to that entrance road. It has a full three, full lanes. We stack now all the way to the road, have double-lane stacking all the way to the bus convergence at the driveway in the Winklers, which has greatly reduced that. Even before that, we had at most about ten cars stacked out there when we looked at it, but now we've moved those ten cars, we allow for thirty-four cars to stack from that driveway before the convergence going into the loop to pick up. So it has greatly reduced. It doesn't really impact Winkler at all, because Winkler has more than enough stacking. Obviously, the Weddington is the one that would be most impacted by that.
So we've designed our internal traffic pattern as well as we can to keep everything moving currently, is that?
At the current population, sir, yes.
With current, yeah, thank you.
Do we have other examples where private sectors tied into our school driveways and accessways?
We do. We have private residences trapped in Concord Middle School and Irving Elementary School are prime examples of that. We have three residences that actually accessed our private drive there.
Yeah, just a clarification, that was a contingency of the purchase of that land. So it was not a post-construction activity.
But it was, it is allowed, obviously.
Yeah, a regular concern I have is what precedent does this set for future access? If we, if we have a less than reputable, this is a great place to, a nice business to have under umbrella, but say, ten years from now, on the other side, on the exit, and somebody is not quite so reputable, establishes and wants to tie in to our roadway, what precedent does this set for us as a board? Are we committing to future access?
I would probably have to pass that on to you, Mr. Schwartz, because...
To me, was that to me?
You can answer that if you like, I think you probably...
You could deal with each situation separately. It wouldn't necessarily set a precedent for anything.
I don't, I don't know that, you can, once it's zoned for business and there's a business there, then if that business goes under and another one comes to take its place, the driveway's still there. So, you know, the type of business, I think, is probably a little less relevant than we think.
I would add to that, the fact that it does change businesses, if it does change business to a different business, then we go through the rezoning process again with the City of Concord, and they would may, they may at that point in time instill the requirements of the curbing gutter, depending on that usage, I guess, is that, I guess that's the way you look at it, so. But we, as the Board of Education, would not have direct impact on that decision. It would have to be based on the City of Concord ordinance at that time.
Is there in any way any financial impact to Carris Schools in any of these proposals?
No, sir, we've talked to the Levits, the owners, about that, and they understand that they would bear the cost associated with doing all construction and signage.
Mr. Louder, do you know what the current zoning designation is for this particular property? Is it a conditional zoning, or were there any restrictions on it when it was zoned?
Well, no, sir, I do not.
That would be helpful for us to know.
It was a zone residential, obviously, before, but I may ask the owners, do you know what the changes on it was? Office institutional.
It's office institutional, which could support about any type of...
Business, uh... For the most part, yeah, other than retail.
Right. So that led to my question about transfer of ownership. If we make a contract with them, is that null and void when the ownership changes? Or would we, and would they have to, new owner have to come into an agreement with us before, so that we could have control over that entrance and find out more information?
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
We could make the agreement specific to these owners and that it expires if they sell the, that is, they couldn't sell without our approval, or it expires if and when they do sell.
So non-transferable?
Correct.
So the new owners would have to come and negotiate, just like...
Yes, we could do that. Well, well, the driveway would be there, but any additional terms that might be included in this, such as insurance and indemnification clauses, those sorts of things, would be tied to the owner.
And you, do you know what the hours of operation are going to be for this particular...
Most of the hours would be in the evenings, after school, for, obviously, they cater to school-aged children for that dance studio situation, so most of that would be after their hours, and they would be there in the evenings.
Yeah, again, I just want to be devil's advocate here, so I don't believe we could restrict them from serving homeschool students, serving young-age students who are not in school yet. Our buses, let's say, our buses are fully off of that property, probably by, what, eight thirty-nine in the morning? And then, but they're coming back on by about two-thirty, two-fifteen, two-thirty, probably. So if you think about school, if an elementary school finishes at two-fifteen, two-thirty, and I don't know what the times of those three schools are exactly, but let's say they finish. Okay, so they're closed at three, but that means those students are eligible, or available, I should say, not eligible, but available to go to some lessons. And then, but we still have the middle school and PLC coming out at the same time. So I don't think we're going to be able to manage it by a strict timeframe kind of restriction.
I just asked what the hours of the business were, so we, so the board would have an idea of what kind of operating hours they were going to have, kind of questions that I have.
I think that would change.
Then comes the whole access to the business, because like you said, during the stacking period, we have a very limited access window in certain times of the day, where the business literally would be shielded from...
Most of our stacking comes between the hours of two-thirty and about three-ten. Because, like I said, Winkler stacking is not an issue, because Winkler stacks well beyond the turn. It's just the stacking comes between two-thirty, when parents show up thirty, forty minutes before the kids go out of school, pick them up and wait in line, to actually till three o'clock when their school is.
But remember, Winkler stacking and PLC will now share the same driveway. So...
Also a different outlook.
Yeah.
I think any decision we make probably needs to be thought of as during maximum traffic, if it will exist during the busiest times, period. I mean, that's kind of the bottleneck that would possibly be created by adding however many cars to the driveway scenario. We can't, we can't modify any business's hours. That's kind of ridiculous to assume that we have some power over that. I think we just make the assumption that what happens in the worst-case scenario, is it a problem or not? If it, if it is, then, you know, what type of problem would that be? But otherwise, I don't, I don't know about, the discussion about hours of operation is just, I'm not sure if that's very productive, but you can continue if you'd like.
Just a quick question, do we currently have any sidewalks or foot traffic there coming off of Weddington or? Well, I can imagine someone having a dance lesson at two-thirty and walking from the middle school or toward, or being walked by their parents or an adult to, from the elementary school, coming through there when all that traffic is...
Yeah, I actually thought about that, because at this point, we can't really restrict a business's activities, but what if they said we wanted to start an after-school program, and mom says, well, just walk over, it's not that far. We can't do that. We can't have kids walking by themselves, unsupervised on school property. So, I don't know how we would, could manage that. It could be managed, I don't know how. Mr. Schwartz, I don't know, do you have any thoughts on that?
You, you could have the students, the students who would be leaving after school, the duty to supervise would be no greater than if they were walking home from school.
Yeah, and this is not a walkable school, so it's set back from the road.
Okay.
It's kind of like the same thing, if you're...
So just release them, they have to be, same thing, they can't walk across the parking lot, they have to be released to the car line or to a parent, walking up to the school or to a bus.
So expensive is it to build a sidewalk?
Well, actually, actually, the decision on releasing them to walk home or to walk to the dance studio is, that's not a legal decision, that's a school board decision. You could change that if you wanted to. That's within the discretion of the board to decide to change or not.
Okay, my comment, which share a lot of your comments, but I would want to see, before we would have any kind of vote, a detailed drawing and what kind of signage. So for example, if that entrance on this new drawing was one-way in, what would be shown, you know, on the, in anything to stop the people? Because the angle of the road would give an, could give an implication. It's on the right side of the exit, which would be normal driving pattern, and it has a curve, at least in this drawing it shows, a curve coming back out to the opposite way on Winkler's entrance drive. And so there's a little bit of a visual there that it may invite people to come back out that way, so how could that be structured and signed? And then, coming, if you were coming out of the exit, it would have to be a clear stop sign, not a yield or a glide onto the driveway, because people, this is not a real far distance back off of Weddington Road, so it would have to be clearly signed, so. Mr. Powell?
Tim, have you considered a, requiring a merge lane there on the left-hand merge coming out?
No, sir, I have not. We just obviously looked at it from an option of just with island and enforcing a left turn, which, you know, DOT uses ninety percent of the time at their intersections where they don't want...
Did you say an island?
Well, either, separation, either a separation of drives with a curve in the drive for turn or an island, either one. I mean, it works both ways. I mean, I could, if I was designing it, and I'm putting asphalt in, and I'm doing it the most economic way, I'm putting those two roadways together. When I get to the end, I got an island that says turn, because it's cheaper to put asphalt down double width than two separate lanes. But, but I mean, it works both ways. I mean, you could have a grass median, as they have there, with the turn lane only, and the, you know, curving to the left and go, or you could have a physical island barrier that says, you know, you got to turn left, or you got to make a really, really awkward turn to go back to the right, which is, you know, what DOT does in most cases.
Well, board member, what is your pleasure? Do we put this on the action agenda next week? Do we choose to not review it again? We are not obligated to act on it, but what is your pleasure?
I guess my question is, how does it benefit the school system? If we look at the kids, most of the way I look at things is, how is this helping our students? And how does this, you know, it's, it's a property owner that's purchased a property that's next to our, our school, and they're being told that, hey, they got a problem, and why is that been, all of a sudden, become our problem? To solve their problem? What are we getting for that? How is that helping our kids? I mean, at a minimum, you'd have to, you would think they do offer something for our students specifically, either through discount or through grants or something for kids who can't afford it. I don't, I don't know, but I'd like to see something towards that helps Carris County Schools' kids for this. Otherwise, their problem has become our problem, and I don't, like, we're under no obligation to act, so at this point, I don't see any reason why we need to do anything.
And Mr. Schwartz? I may be off-base on this, but I'm concerned if there would be some agreement on discounts or whatever. It doesn't remove any liability.
And I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, as an example, how is it, how are we, how is it benefiting the school system for this decision?
And I think that's what we need to look at. Mr. Harrison, your preference? To address or not address it? Okay. Mr. Shoemaker?
Well, I understand that the City of Concord does require, like you said, curb and gutter and sidewalks, and, you know, for me, this wouldn't be nearly as big an issue if it was just a, an entrance into the property, but the exit was back out onto Weddington Road, I would be more inclined to go along with helping them out, but that means probably they would have to put sidewalks in, so by virtue of the fact that they would be now putting a driveway back onto, onto Concord, I mean, onto Weddington Road, but I am not inclined to have an entrance and exit going into, going towards the schools, it just, it just doesn't feel good to me at this point.
Dr. Kirk?
I'm inclined to think the same way as Mr. Shoemaker did. I'm not too sure that I'm comfortable with more traffic on a road built and designed for our kids, and I think certainly the bottom line is, is how do we, as a board, how do we get involved into this? And so, just not, not like to address that question.
Mr. Powell?
I don't think I have a big problem with it. I don't see a lot of negatives. Be a good neighbor.
And Madam Chair, in the big, big picture, we're going to have much more traffic on Weddington Road when the new high school is put in, and that's in the very short term, and the congestion in that area is going to be significantly more. This is a relatively small piece of that, but designing or making any kind of accommodation for this business is a, is a, is a short-term decision, but in the longer term, we would have, I bet we would have some foot traffic. I bet we would have cars zigzagging and coming and going in every direction, trying to get their kids into such a concentration of so many school facilities, plus this one business, all, in some parts, a day that overlapped. So, while I'm still thinking about it, I'm thinking the longer, longer term is the actual increase of congestion between auto and bus and foot traffic in that area.
And Mr. Harrison, you just gave me another thought, just thinking about the high school we'll dismiss first, I'm guessing, that they traditionally do, so therefore, we could have some students, drivers, coming from the high school, coming a short jog down the road, making a left into the property, to pick up the younger sibling at one or the other of the schools, which would add additional traffic that maybe doesn't occur today because of the proximity of the schools. So, I will share that Ms. Carpenter did get to review the initial, she didn't see this drawing, but the initial documents before she left, and she was not in favor, obviously didn't hear all this discussion, but her first view of it, she was not in favor, so. So, I'm hearing that we do not want to add it to the agenda.
If I might add something, and I'm not advocating, I'm here presenting, as far as your traffic concerns on Weddington Road, from a traffic engineering standpoint, tapping this interest come off of, not off of Weddington Road is a good thing, because most of your traffic is going to be on Weddington Road, and having, obviously, stopping on Weddington Road and making a left turn into this school is going to add to the congestion of Weddington Road that does not exist now, and would not exist should they be able to enter in and stack within our driveway, because they're no different, they already have turn lanes existing, okay? Secondly, the improvements we're making at the exit of Winkler School and adding a traffic signal to create traffic breaks for the flow of traffic, actual flow out in for both directions will be substantially improved over what exists today, even with the additional traffic. So, just from a traffic engineer's standpoint only, I, I had some conversation about that, I just want to make sure I had some clarification as to how that would probably affect the traffic on Weddington Road.
Yeah, I think the conversation was more about the traffic onto our property, not about what's on Weddington Road, but on our property, am I correct? So, and so, that wouldn't necessarily change. Okay, so, we will not add this to the action agenda? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. Okay, thank you. The next item up, so we will now go down to number six, items possibly for the consent agenda, we'll have Ms. Klutz join us again for budget amendments.
Thank you. Budget amendments are short this month. We'll start with the first one on state budget amendments, so the first one is just additional, is reimbursement funds, and so, we ask teachers to go to new teacher orienta, orientation in August, and it just takes DPI a little while to reimburse us for those funds, and that's what that is. The next one is an additional allocation for group homes for our EC program, and then the, the final one on state is a reclass for restart. We'll move on to the next one, which are federal budget amendments. There was an addition of $32,000 into our, again, our EC program, this is federal dollars. We had some small, small reclass, classify funds here, the next two, and then, the, the one for PRC 103 workshop expenses is actually a reduction, but when we initially got the allotment, there was an increase, and then this was a final adjustment, so it's a minor reduction. And then, finally, adjustment for Title I, planning versus actual, just small adjustments there. Move on to capital outlay, this is what we discussed last month, where we had asked the county for $600,000 of contingency so we can move forward, so just following up on the paperwork with that one. And finally, our local special fund is where we place our grants, so this is funds for the Confucius Grant at Concord High School. Are there any questions on any of those?
Board members?
Okay, for consent agenda? Okay. Thank you. Next, we have 6.02 Policies for Approval on the First Reading, we'll have Ms. Reimer, and I, oh, seems Ms. Burns is here? I say, are you flying solo tonight? I didn't see her back there.
Good evening, board, we have three policies at tonight for first read. The first one is Policy 3225-4312-7320, Technology Responsible Use. This is a district request, and this is a district request to change prohibiting students from using their personal devices as private Wi-Fi hotspots during instructional hours. The policy committee reviewed and recommends as written. Policy 4320 Tobacco Products, based on students, this updates the definition of the tobacco product, it updates the list of paraphernalia to include our vaping devices, provides clarification of when students will be in violation of Policy 4325 Drugs and Alcohol, and updates cross-references. And then, finally, Policy 4325 Drugs and Alcohol, this clarifies the applicability of the policy, it updates the list of prohibited substances to include our CBD oils and synthetic materials, adds a list of tobacco and drug paraphernalia consistent with 4320, including our vaping devices, provides a reference to Policy 5120 for relation, for with the relationships with our law enforcement in regards to investigation, and updates cross-refer.
Okay, board members, any questions on these policies?
Dr. Reimer, and to all of your staff as well, congratulations and kudos to you for beefing up the tobacco use and the paraphernalia to cover the wide range of crazy stuff people are doing with inhalants and stuff like that. A lot of people in my family might have lived a bit longer if they had been wiser about the use of tobacco, and it stuns me, it's not our fault, but it stuns me that to this day, we still have to talk to kids about the dangers of inhaling that stuff, but thank you for the clarifications on it.
Thank you. Any other comments, board? Consent agenda? Okay, thank you. Next, we have 6.03 Policies for Approval on the Second Reading.
We have had no questions or comments on these, and no one has sent us anything on the website.
So, board members, any questions? Consent agenda? Thank you. And item 6.04, the submission of training hours for Mrs. Carpenter and Dr. Kirk. Any questions or comments? Consent agenda?
Can you tell us a little bit about what you did when you were there, or what you heard?
I found the racial equity seminar just really enlightening a lot of people from throughout the district, it was a good cross-section of demographics, both gender and ethnicity, very well-presented, kind of a wake-up call to where we are now, regrettably, not much different than we were decades ago. It was not, there was no axe to grind, it was just a very matter-of-fact presentation, a lot of interest from the community, and I think we'll see a lot more continued awareness of where we are, where we need to be within Cabarrus County, specifically then also as a nation, well worth our time. A lot of our Cabarrus County School leaders were there as well, board members too.
Will there be another such session, or how's that proceeding?
There's actually a follow, this is an introductory training, and there's a follow-up, it's actually two full days that Ms. Reimer and Dr. Hill and I will be going to, I think it's the 21st and the 22nd of March, but two full days that involve law enforcement. Faith-based community is very involved with this, and I can't remember, a couple government entities that were all there, so one is kind of a, this is an intro, and ours is actually two full days that they've requested that we have a presence at, so the three of us will be attending that.
Okay, and I think several of you attended the Saturday session too, right?
Yeah, Ms. Jones, Ms. Reimer and I, Dr. Kirk, Ms. Carpenter, I think that was everybody from the school system, right?
And this was open to the public to attend if they were interested.
Did any students attend, any young people, adolescents?
Well, thank you for representing the schools and the board at that event. Okay, moving to the items for consideration for action, 7.01, the Audit Contract, we're having some repeat visitors here.
Yes, so it's time again to get started on our annual audit. Last year, we did an RFP and selected Anderson, Smith, and Wyke, and so it's time to issue that contract, and we're just requesting, there was no additional fee, it's the same fee as it was last year, requesting the board approve that contract.
So, board members, any questions? I think we made the decision last year to change, and so now, we would normally go for three to five years.
We would, yeah, so we sent the RFP out, and we selected these folks, and so, yes, generally, we do do three to five years.
Has this fee been about the same amount year over year?
It's the exact same amount as it was last year.
As last year, previous to that, has the fee been about?
Yes, I'm pretty sure it didn't increase when we RFP'd it, yes.
Yeah, can we, Mr. Schwartz, can we put this on consent, or because it's the contract, we have to do action?
No, you can add it to consent.
Okay. Board members, is consent agenda okay for this one? Okay? We will add that to consent. Actually, Ms. Monroe will take care of that for us. Okay, item 7.02, we have Matthew, no, we don't have Matthew, we have Ben, I don't know why I thought Matthew was coming up for this.
It's okay, Matthew and I were both on the agenda, he's not here tonight, so.
Yeah, okay.
All right, I'll fly solo.
So, let me just introduce, this is for the Summer EOG/EOC Test Administration.
So, this will be the third year we've asked for your approval on this. We are not allowed to do full retesting as of 2010, but two years ago, the state came out and said we could do retesting for students under certain conditions. So, the conditions are, we'll go to slide two. We have to test after the regular academic school year, which would mean after the last day of school, which I think is June 8th, this would be the 11th and 12th that we could bring students back for testing. Students can repeat elements of a course to improve functional skills, so what that means is we would use EVOs data, value-added data, benchmark data, student grades, to decide what areas to remediate for students. Students would be given the option to come back, it's voluntary participation only. Test scores will be included in the analysis for proficiency. If you'll remember, when we met for the board mid-year, we talked about where we kind of rank as a district on EOGs and EOCs, and, you know, we said around 35th. What we know is a three proficiency point increase moves us from, say, 35th to 20th in the state, so we know that small gains in proficiency can mean huge things for schools and our district, so anytime we have the opportunity to bring students back in and try again, we will. And then, the other option, or the other requirement, is that you all have to approve it, so what we're asking for you to do is approve for us to bring students back after the end of the school year and retest them with some remediation.
So, who does the remediation?
Pardon me?
Who does the remediation?
Teachers will do the remediation, so we'll.
The same teacher that they had prior, or?
We would definitely try to make sure it was the teacher they had, or a teacher in the area.
And how many kids did we have participate last year?
I honestly don't have that offhand, but I know it was in few hundreds, probably around 600 students came back.
Oh, that's, that's a lot, okay. Thanks.
Board members, any questions?
If the participation is voluntary, how do we urge parents to consent to the voluntary arrangement when it's needed?
We talk about that at our principals' meetings, and they employ all kinds of inventive ways to try to encourage kids to come back, but one of the things that we like to do is change their final grade, right, and give them an opportunity to improve their grade in the course. Students have already passed the class, they don't need a proficient score to move on, so we have to encourage them to come back. The hope that I always have is that our administrators and our teachers have a lot of say with our students, and sometimes, the only thing you have to do is, is ask, and a lot of people want to improve, so I think with a little bit of help, and it goes on their transcript that they pass the EOG with a proficient score versus not, so it's always a good thing to have that.
Okay, can we put this on the consent agenda, I guess?
Yeah, I just had one question. Last year, you did present us with some percentages of proficiencies, do you, did you have any?
I do, and I don't have them with me, and I don't want to guess, I can send those to you, I looked on my computer before I came in to see, and I just couldn't find them.
Because last year, it was like 9% or something like that, and that means, like, if it was, let's just take, for example, if it was like 600 students, then like 56 of them actually increased their proficiency.
Yes, I can get you that, I'll be glad to send that for next week, so it'll be on the agenda, you'll see that.
Thank you.
Which, maybe is what you're both discussing, is there any way to track how last year's cohort, if I can use that phrase, or last year's batch of kids have been doing in their readings since then? Is there any way to get a handle on how effective the summer reading program is, or do we just not have enough data?
Yeah, that is a very different program, what we'd be talking about is just having the opportunity for students to come back quickly, some remediation on skills about test-taking, hitting some of the areas where they didn't do well, and then testing quite quickly. We have, in order to include this for our proficiency, we have to remediate and test very quickly, otherwise, we don't get to include it, it has to be before, I think, July 6th into the month, so for summer reading, this is really not tackling that. So, we could track how students are doing, but the primary purpose of this is to give students an opportunity to take a test again quite quickly, which means they're not getting full course remediation. We have options for that with summer school, credit recovery, beyond this. This is for students who have passed the class, but just need an opportunity to retest.
Is it primarily English as a second language, or every, every reading condition is circumstance that?
I have not looked at the demographic data for the students, but I would say it's any student, I mean, it'd be any student, so I don't know that, I could look that up for you, but I don't know that.
I think an easier way to think of it is, this is primarily students that would have probably been on the bubble, that, you know, they, if they had gotten two or three more questions right, they may have been proficient, and so, historically, I don't have that data in front of me, but when we used to offer that for all the EOCs, about 10% of the students, if they just have the opportunity to take the test, and it sounds like that was 9% or so last year, just coming back and doing it about 10%. it, about 10% of them who may have fallen to this side of the line will fall on the other side of the line, and that's why, why they do it. But he'll, he can send the information, what he's saying, to say, here's how many came back, and here's how many became proficient.
Absolutely.
I would think that, that would also be an opportunity if the student had some unusual circumstance happen, a death in the family, an illness, car breakdown, whatever, they get to come back and, and show what they can do.
Absolutely.
Okay, Board members, is that okay for consent agenda, or do you want more information? Consent? Okay. Thank you. Okay, we are moving on to item 7.03, and we'll welcome Dr. Probst, and I guess Michael Starks is coming too. Have to get used to this turning around and seeing who's back.
On June 30th of this year, our current contract with Time Warner, a three-year contract, expires, so it's time to update the connectivity contract. This process actually began in November with the filing of the 470 with the federal government. We went out to bid in November, bids came in in January, and we had two companies who submitted bids, and you have copy of that. Spectrum at $25,392 a month, and then Windstream at $62,835 a month. We are recommending at this time that we would move forward with a contract, a three-year contract, beginning July 1, 2018 with Spectrum, and we are really pleased. It is a $17,000 savings per month. So the contract has been with Mr. Schwartz and his team. I don't have an updated contract. I know that the attorneys are working with Spectrum to get some updated language. What I really need from all of you is approval to move forward with what's called the 471. On March 23rd, we hit a button and say, yes, Spectrum wins, and I'd not like to do that without your permission.
So it sounds like, Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Will we be able to have those contracts back in perhaps the next two days?
Uh, depends on what happens on the other end of the contract, in part, but I, we'll give that a shot.
Okay. You said, what was the date, Dr. Probst?
Friday, March 23rd.
Okay, so we do have a contingency factor, if that's not all our doubt, we have a budget meeting on March 20th. So I think we need to put it on next week's agenda with the idea that the Board has contracts by Thursday?
We'll do everything we can on our end to try and get it to you in two days, but we're, there are two parties to it, so.
Right. So, Dr. Lauder, is that acceptable, if we have to use that as a contingency for March 20th?
Sounds like it, yeah. I'm not sure there's another option you want to speak to that one?
It's fine, as far as signing the contract, as long as it's right before June 30th, I'm fine. It's the pushing of the button for the 471 on March 23rd.
Yeah, okay. Okay, Board members, questions? Dr. Probst provided this additional sheet at your place today, just to kind of give you a picture of the numbers in a chart.
It'll help with the next item.
Yes, so look at, and I think what we want to focus on is look at the bottom right on the chart.
Correct. If you, if you'll, let me go to the next item, is that okay?
Well, actually, so we will put this on the action agenda for next week, and if for some reason we don't have all the input with adequate time to review, we will do one item on the March 20th budget meeting. Is that acceptable to everyone? Okay.
I just wanted to ask one question. On the 471, the 471 that you have to approve doesn't necessarily require the contract, the contract is still be, being built.
Correct.
So if there's snags in the contract, we still have two different dates, our next meeting and the 20th, to approve the 471.
Correct.
And you're comfortable with that?
Absolutely. Basically, we're just telling the federal government, out of the two bids, we're choosing the lower bid, and we want to move forward.
Right. So I mean, I could see putting that particular approval on the agenda for next week, and then wait for the contract, and have that come out to us in April, where we can approve the contract once we see the final language, so we don't feel like we're under the gun on March 20th.
So Ms. Monroe, perhaps we can touch base around Thursday? If we don't have the contracts, then Dr. Probst can help us with what the motion needs to be?
These are not standard contracts of some sort?
We had used, it had been a standard contract with Time Warner for 15, 20 years, and there is some updated language that we think is appropriate, that our attorneys recommended, and we were pleased with that. And I will tell you that Spectrum has indicated that they have no problem putting that in there, it's just getting that work going.
Okay, thank you.
If we have worked with Time Warner for all those years, and I may be using the word wrong, but the infrastructure that we have to support all of this current technology with Time Warner, is there any need to upgrade existing technology to bring Spectrum into the picture, or just pick up where Time Warner left off?
Well, Spectrum bought Time Warner, so it's the same company.
Okay, well, but it's the same equipment, or the same T-1 cables and all that?
Everything, everything's the same.
That sort of stuff? So no, no additional expenses?
I think it's just a different name.
Yeah, but no additional expenses in the technology in the buildings?
No.
And I'm guessing the contract is with Charter Communications, or is it with Spectrum?
It's with Spectrum.
It is, okay. Because I know sometimes the parent company rides over on the contracts. Okay, so we will put that on the action agenda for next week, and we will adjust before the agenda is formally posted, if need be based on the availability of the approved contracts, or the attorney-approved contracts. So next, we have item 7.04 Regarding the Phone System.
We have five systems that are voice-over IP, the rest are the old analog systems. We've been bringing it to budget for several years, stating that, you know, it's time to update these phones. We're in a position right now where we need to update the phones and move quickly on it. I will tell you that our team has spent since December working with four companies on different scenarios. We went out to bid, we did a rather lengthy RFP, 39 pages, I believe it was, and we had two vendors who pulled out, and two vendors who submitted bids. You'll see the bids that came in are on your page, and the company that we'd like to recommend is a company called Fortinet. What we've, are proposing, the one-time payment of close to $1 million, obviously, that's not in our expansion budget. We'd like to do a monthly lease payment up to a 60-month lease. Typically, we do three years, but Kelly has worked with the county just to see if we could do a five, five, 60-month, five-year lease, and that payment would be $18,000 a month. So what I'd like to do, and there's another document that Mike will pull up, I gave it to you, it's called the Savings on the Phone System. So I think if I walk you through this, you can see how Kelly and I have decided, or we're proposing, that we can actually pay for this without it being an expansion item. Our currently, current phone bill is $23,540 a month. These are old analog expensive lines. Our new monthly voice-over IP bill will be $1862. That is a huge drop. We still have some copper B1 lines that we need to keep inside the schools. Those are for things like your elevator, your fax, your 911, your security system, freezers, I actually have a phone alarm on the freezers, that, that will run us for all 42 sites around $3,000 a month. The new lease payment comes in at $18,093, for total payments of $22,955. Notice that that gives us a savings of $584.50 per month. So this is how we would recommend, over the next five years, updating the entire phone system inside the system. That includes all the phones here. The reason I'm pressing so quickly to move on this is I'd like to get all these phones updated before we come back in August. There will be new phone numbers, the schools need to know those, they print their handbooks, this is a huge project, and the sooner we can get started on it, the better. The sooner we can get started on it, we can start to have the cost savings. So it is our recommendation that we move forward with this five-year lease.
So the schools will not be able to keep the same phone number for the main dial-in number?
No, that, and already, we have schools that have changed their phone numbers based on the new system, like when we put in Mount Pleasant Middle, Central Cabarrus, Concord High School, they've changed their phone numbers. Those were, you know, little, small, but this is big, this is, the numbers here will change.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because there was federal law that was put in place some years ago about number portability, and so they're not allowing us to transfer the numbers?
You have to remember that those are on the old analog B1 lines, and these are on the new voice-over IP. So there's a whole new schematic protocol that has to be used.
It shouldn't matter. Because you can actually move a home number to a cell phone.
It was the same way with Windstream when we were with that company, and we moved our numbers over to the voice-over IP.
If you want, we can look into that.
I can just tell you that on the last five sites that we've had with our former, our current carrier, we had to move it over, they had to change. You buy by a block. Yeah, most companies will tell you that you can't, but if you find the right piece of legislation.
We had a different attorney then, too.
I think they might be able to keep them.
I'll investigate it. The changing of the phone number, if that's an issue, we can certainly, we will definitely explore it. If we can get away with not changing the phone number, obviously, we would say, you're correct. Why would you want to do that?
I don't think it's just a matter of taking possession, it's, it's just sometimes, it's got to be a little well-planned.
Yeah. Board members, other questions on?
So basically, between the two, between this proposal and the one we had previous, we're going to save nearly $18,000 a month, I mean, a month.
Correct, and you'll own the system, you'll own the phones, and you, after five years, we go, think of the savings you'll have in five years. You go from paying $18,093 on a five-year lease to paying $1862 on your monthly bill.
And so at the end of five years, I guess there's a small payout to take control of the system, is, or is it just, it just defaults to us after five years?
We ran it the same way we do the computer leases, we own it at the end.
Perfect.
Okay, will we have a contract before next week to review?
We have, you want to say, Kelly, on the lease documents?
So the, the lease document that's attached, can you pull that up, Michael? Is, is a draft, it's a standard lease agreement that is used. Brian Shaw has reviewed that lease agreement and has approved, he likes the terms that were just automatically in there. So the only thing we have to do now is drop those actual numbers in for the lease payment, and they've promised to turn that around prior to next week, this week.
Any other questions on the phone? If not, we can go to paging system?
So one of the things that is intertwined with the phone system is the paging system, and we have 17 sites that we're recommending that we update the paging system, and you'll see inside there that there's, there's no savings, this is a flat-out purchase of these, updating these paging systems. We would like to put it in a 60-month lease, very similar to what we would do with the phone system. The savings that we have on the land, the metro Ethernet is around $17,341. We would recommend that we take some of that money to pay for these paging systems and update them at the same time we update the phone system, and that payment would be $5,283. We did have four companies who, who came in with bid, and we are recommending KNC. And that lease proposal is in your documents also. And I believe Mr. Shaw and the attorneys approved it.
That's actually the quote you're looking at, there's a lease document, that's the Word document, I believe, if you want to pull that up.
Should be.
That's all I have.
Yeah, it should be the lease proposal.
Go to the, the phone one, I thought I saw it.
It's, he's pulled it up. Yeah, it says lease proposal, though.
Yeah.
There's a more lengthy document that's the real, that's the lease proposal, which has the amounts on it, but the, the legal document.
That's the one I have.
Okay.
The same is true for the previous agenda item, 704.
Okay. So we do need another document attached?
Yes, and I, I can only tell you those, the documents I attached today, how's that?
Oh, that's fine.
I'll send out to the Board the, the longer ones. Yeah, and Ms. Monroe can put it in Board Docs for next week when she posts the agenda?
There's a problem when you take a vacation the day before, or the week before?
How dare you?
Really?
Okay, so that will go on the action agenda, we'll have the formal agreement to review.
That is the last item, thank you, that was the last item on our agenda. I do want to mention that today, at about 4:00, I think this was from the county, right? And they? It came from?
Emails from Brandon McPherson.
Yeah, the county would like us to take a formal vote next week to agree to change the properties that are in their name, so that they can use it as collateral for bonds, securing bonds. So I didn't even get to read through this yet. We can have Mr. Lauder, I guess, send it out to us, is that okay with you? I guess. Okay, well, Dr. Lauder will send, send it out, just so everyone can read it and see. Just on the surface, like I said, I haven't read it in detail, but it looks like kind of standard procedure, where the county takes properties back in their name, leases it to us for a dollar, until that, the item, the financial instrument is paid off, and then the property returns to us.
Right, and it's a property swap, because the property that has to be collateral on these qualified zone bonds has to be an active school.
Yep, so, and I think it's taking out the old Mount Pleasant Middle School.
Correct, yeah. It's switching Wyancov for the old Mount Pleasant.
Yeah. So, okay, any other business for the Board this evening? Okay, I will take a motion that this meeting be adjourned. Okay, who made the motion? Mr. Harrison, Dr. Kirk? All in favor, say aye. Okay, motion passes 6-0. Thank you all, and have a good evening.